Good evening, everyone. We'd like to go ahead and start the public hearing for the budget. We'll start with roll call. Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsome.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes. Mayor Taylor. I'm just going to make a few short comments here before we have the presentation this evening, and then we'll go ahead and turn it over to our finance department. As many of you know, when I came into office, I did not have a budget director, nor did the city even have an outlined budget for the fiscal year 2122. We took what was typically a five-month process and accomplished forming a new budget in under eight weeks. It's truly a remarkable accomplishment, and I want to thank all of the staff that helped guide the process to get us to where we are today. And I'd like to recognize them here. Sherri from our finance department. Don Schultz. Noel Keisha Lupper is not here tonight. Neither is Tamika from our HR. And one big person that has, let me tell you, helped in so many ways are Fire Chief, I want to sincerely thank everybody for your support during my transition into my new role as mayor. And this year's budget is an example of living within our means. We are spending less money than we did in previous years. We aren't taking out new debt. And we're making proactive business decisions that will help move our community forward. Like every major city across this nation, Waukegan's now facing the challenging -- challenge of budgeting in a post-pandemic economic environment. We're deeply challenged by the decline in major sources of revenue, including sales tax, alcohol sales, hotel tax, and gaming video tax revenues, which all took a significant dip during the last 15 months. We project that our traditional areas of revenue will begin recovering this fiscal year as people ease back into their regular patterns of spending and travel. Combined with our efforts to reduce government spending and increase efficiency, I believe that we can make a full recovery and set this city of Waukegan on the right path to thrive in our new post-pandemic economy. When I first came into office and we looked at the budget, it looked like we had nearly an $8.5 million budget deficit. But we have worked diligently to reduce the number down to $3.4 million by reducing wasting government, searching for grants, increasing efficiency of processes, and offering early retirement packages to reduce staff costs and reorganization of division of work throughout the city. By leveraging available funds from the American Rescue Plan federal funding to reduce the deficit even further, to -- well, we were at -- we got it from 8.5 to 3.4. We have reduced it down to $400,000. This year's deficit is the smallest we have had since at least 2016. We need to pass this budget to ensure that we can fill several open positions, most importantly, at our police and fire departments. The budget will also allow our departments to begin non-emergency expenditures to get our city back to work. This budget doesn't have everything that I want. It certainly won't have everything you want. But this is our opportunity to show unified leadership for the city of Waukegan. And unified leadership is absolutely something that our residents and businesses expect from us. I know that with this budget, we'll be able to budget for additional items down the road and fill more of our wants and not only our needs. Again, I want to thank the Aldermen. I want to thank our staff. This has been an incredible, credible time. Remember, this is my eighth week in office. It's been a tough journey, but it's been a rewarding journey, and it's all for the city of Waukegan and our residents. Thank you. Steph?
Good evening, everyone. I know some of you, but certainly not all of you. My name is Don Schultz. I served as a chief financial officer here in Waukegan for approximately 26 years, leaving in 2007, when I became chief financial officer in Cicero for another 12 years thereabouts. It's really a pleasure to be back and working with Mayor Taylor and the staff. Mayor Taylor was quite modest, beginning off her comments. When I first came back and I looked at the budget, there was a significant deficit, even greater than the $8 million that she was able to carve down. The initial numbers, without all the revenue assumptions being completed and all the expenditures put in, was $12 million. An unheard-of number. And be able to address that $12 million deficit and bring it down to a workable number for the city is really a great accomplishment. You have a great staff here in the finance department. I was very pleased to work with all of them. They work very well as a team together, and it's very good to see that. We are presenting to you what is in all intents a balanced budget across all funds. To balance a budget, we're looking at current revenues and current expenditures, but we're also looking at unassigned fund balances, that is cash and investments that are available to cover any short-term deficits in certain funds. Some funds will naturally always have a deficit. Special revenue funds, we'll discuss in a few minutes, you'll see, will always have a deficit because they collect grant funds and one year --
[inaudible]
-- money over a period of years. So you don't have money coming in in successive years, but you have expenditures, so you'll see a deficit. But all those deficits are covered. We're not -- there's no need for any short-term borrowing. There's no need to issue any emergency bonds. No emergency funding is necessary at all in any part of the city. The budget is completely balanced across all funds. The worldwide pandemic brought the economy to a halt. We all know that. We've seen the news for the last year. It's been devastating. It's been the cause of the loss of millions of lives worldwide. It has pretty much staggered the economy. It's created great poverty worldwide. It's increased joblessness in all of our states and certainly in our local communities. It's brought businesses to a close in many areas. Many of these businesses will not reopen. We hope most of Waukegan will. Waukegan wasn't immune to what was happening worldwide. We saw great joblessness. We saw an increase in unemployment claims to new record highs. We saw increased poverty. We saw families struggling and worrying about the future for their children. What kind of world are we going to present to our children? Economists lately, though, are predicting a reawakening of the economy. They see a robust economy in 2021, and there's already numbers that are showing that. The massive vaccination efforts are working. People are out and about. Businesses are reopening. The government's restricted or relaxed most of the restrictions on occupancy and indoor and outdoor events. We see the reopening and the new hiring of employees. Job postings are at a record high throughout the nation. The Philadelphia Federal Reserve, they hire what they call as an expert panel of professional forecasters, and they make predictions. And they forecast rates of inflation and the growth in GDP. And what they see is a return to normalcy. It was backed up by analytics provided by Moody's Investor Service. They see a return to normalcy, and I think you see it here in Waukegan. When we started working on the budget, it was in this period of great uncertainty. Where's the future going to be? Where are we going to be economic-wise in the city? But it was also created, not only with uncertainty, but great optimism. We're very optimistic about the economy in 2021, and I think our revenue projections reflect that, and I think the budget reflects that as well. Total planned expenditures. This is a large city. It's 25 and a half square miles. It's the 10th largest municipality in the state of Illinois. It provides services to, what, 25,000, 26,000 households? It's a massive undertaking to provide the services. You do it with a budget of over $181 million. A large amount, but it's 2% lower than last year. It's balanced across all funds. It anticipates reopening of the economy instead of a return to normalcy. When speaking with the mayor in terms of what are the key objectives, what should we be looking at to accomplish? What do you want to focus on in this budget? It's very important to be focused on. In developing the budget, the first thing you have to do is identify the needs of the community. What are they? And here you enlist the support of our other elected officials, members of our city council, community leaders, your neighbors. What are the needs? What should we be focusing on? How should we prioritize our decisions? Because not every need can be financed. There's limited resources, just like in your home budget, like in anyone's budget. There's limited resources that we have to prioritize the spending of. There's opportunity cost. Decisions we make on spending money in one area is money taken away from something else. So we're very careful how you prioritize where the money should go. Control cost through strict oversight. That's absolutely essential. We have a budget. The budget's going to work as a financial plan. It's going to work as a guide for our departments. They need to stay within that budget. And it's going to be monitored on a monthly basis. Members of our city council will be given a report of that activity on a monthly basis. We will track revenues and see if the revenues are in track with what we've projected. If they fall short, we'll have time to address that shortage and make adjustments as necessary. If the revenue isn't there to support our services, then either we're going to dip more into an available unassigned fund balance, or we're going to look at ways of addressing the delivery of those services. Eliminate duplicative work assignments. Consolidate positions wherever we can. It's true that in some departments, do you need two people, or three people, or four people? Can those jobs be consolidated? What are you looking at that through the year? And working with our department has an identifying areas in which certain job duties can be consolidated and perhaps become more productive on an individual basis. Improve efficiencies. Our employees need to be cross-trained so they can fill in for each other. When someone's on vacation or off sick, cross-training is essential, and there's money in the budget for training in individual departments. We need to improve communications through all of our departments. We need to talk to each other. And we need to do that through electronic basis and also verbally, and meeting with -- our department had meetings. And what was really expressed to us was the need to develop a five-year budget plan, not one year. We're not so much concerned about getting through this year or next year. We'll get through it. There's enough liquidity in the budget to get through isolated one-time budgets. What we're more concerned about is where is Waukegan going to be three years from now? Five years from now? You need to address the problems today so you don't have a problem three years from now or five years down the road, and you're wondering, how do I fix it? You fix it now. You don't wait to fix it later. There we go. In governmental accounting, budgets are divided into seven different fund groups. You ordinarily hear about the general fund. The general fund is the key operating fund of any local government. It's the fund that accounts for public safety, for the building department, for public works, for, you know, streets and highways and sidewalks, fire and emergency, building and planning and development, the central core administrative departments to take care of the day-to-day business of City Hall. That's your general fund. The general fund, as you see, has anticipated revenues of $76.1 million, expenditures of $80.3 million, with an initial deficit there of $4.2. But what we're able to do is take $1 million from motor fuel tax. Motor fuel tax monies are monies that can be used on public works projects. We fund a good portion of street repaving through motor fuel tax. We can also cover the costs of some public works: employees, overtime, equipment, street paving within public works. So we're going to use part of that money to bring down that deficit to 3.2. The balance of that is covered by liquid assets. Special revenue funds are funds that are established to address a specific purpose. Money is collected from a variety of sources that can only be used for reserved specified purposes. You can't transfer it to a general fund. You can't transfer it to other funds. It has to be used for the purposes -- there are special taxes for the purpose, such as property taxes collected for refuse collection. It can only be used for garbage. Motor fuel tax can only be used for motor fuel tax highway-related projects. Grants. We get a number of grants from the federal government and state government. It can only be used for those specific purposes. The grant funds you'll see in the special revenue will have a deficit of $3.3 million. And you'll see how that's going to be covered in the next slide. Capital projects. Capital projects are funds that you would ordinarily like -- you'd think in the past here, they've been funded through bond proceeds. Well, we don't have bond proceeds. The bond proceeds have been exhausted. We've done the street work. We're going to expend the balance within those funds for streets, sidewalks, alleys, and some public works equipment for an excavator and a truck so that we can continue to do paving in-house. But that budget is $4.1 million. It shows a deficit, but the deficit is covered by the bond proceeds that are sitting in the bank. Debt service funds. We've issued debt, just like you have a mortgage. You bought your house. You're paying off your mortgage. We're paying off debt that we -- the bonds that we sold to investors to bring us money so we can do these projects for streets, for sidewalks, for alleys, for the general maintenance of the infrastructure. $14.3 million will be spent this year on principal interest on those bonds. At the end of last year, we had approximately $77 to $78 million in outstanding general obligation bonds. We'll bring that down to $68 million by the end of this year. Enterprise funds are funds that are conducted and they're treated like a private business, a business activity. It generates its own money, pays its own bills. What fund is that? Water and Sewer is an enterprise fund. Generates its own money, pays its own bills. We have an award-winning filtration plant with aged infrastructure. We issued a number of bonds over the years to address the needs of the infrastructure, to take care of the facility. And now we'd like to expand the water and sewer lines so that we can start selling water to outlying communities that are interested in purchasing Waukegan water. We just can't service them today because we don't have the lines going out that far. Another enterprise fund is your parking system, motor vehicle parking system. It generates money through parking fees, through rental fees at the garage. Internal service funds are funds within the city that provide services to other departments. We have a risk management fund. It covers workers' compensation and liability programs and expenses. Those budgets are handled individually, and each individual department is allocated a certain cost for workers' comp and liability. And that money is transferred over to an internal service fund that pays those costs. But the expense itself shows up where the individual department is, and it simply flows the money into the internal service fund. Employee benefit plan is a second internal service fund. That pays the health insurance costs of active employees and retirees. Employees, active employees pay a portion of premiums. The city pays a portion of premiums. Retirees pay a portion of premiums. And money flows into internal service funds. It covers the claims. Fiduciary funds, those are funds in which we serve as a fiduciary agent, as a trustee and the holders of those funds. And those are your pension funds for police and fire. The police pension fund and the fire pension fund are fiduciary funds, funded through three sources. One, through employee contributions that are set by statute. Two, by an actuarially determined contribution on the part of the city, how much has to go into their fund on an annual basis. And thirdly, through investment earnings. And that's going to take -- we have revenues of $27 million, expenses of $16 million. It's going to have a nice $11 million, which will go towards the payment off of outstanding debt. There's a very high unfunded liability in pension funds. You probably know that because statewide, there's a large unfunded liability in pension systems, in public pension systems. And we'll talk about that when we talk about fiduciary in a few minutes. But the total budget will show a deficit of 3.4. Okay, Sherri? Deficits on paper. The credit is strong. General fund, as of May 1, $14 million is being drawn from to cover that deficit. Although we've learned, we won't need to draw from that because we'll be receiving money from the American Rescue Plan where we can reimburse the city for lost revenue due to COVID. And we've identified so far $4 million that can be used for that purpose. Other money will be used for water and sewer upgrades, for broadband. Special revenue funds, $18 million in the bank for a $3 million deficit. Capital projects, $2.1 million deficit with $3.5 million available to cover that. These are all unassigned fund balances. Fund balances can be assigned. They can be committed. They can be reserved. These are unassigned, which means that they're free to use. And the enterprise fund, water and sewer fund, you'd have to admit, it's a healthy fund. Okay, Sherri? Budget can -- in preparing this budget, it's just not one big, large city budget. There's 50 individual budgets in the $181 million or $181.28 million budget that we presented to the city. There's 50 individual budgets within that that makes up that whole. 44% of that budget is the general fund. And you know that within the general fund, 88% of that is for personnel costs. 80% of that is for public safety, while another 70% for public works for highways and streets. People are always interested in headcount. That is, employee census. How many employees do we have? Where are they? Are you making changes to the makeup of employees citywide in different departments? We tried to present a history going back to 2017 through the proposed budget for 2022. There will be an increase in funded positions of 4.5. You should probably take a minute to explain what those changes are so you have an understanding of what's happening. There's going to be some transfers of employees from one department to another, but the net effect -- and there are going to be some new hires. It'll be some removals completely from the budget. In public works, there will be three additional budgeted positions in public works. We want to bring on a full-time city engineer. The city currently contracts out engineering services to the tune of, last I saw, is over $2 million over the last several years. We want to bring that in-house with a professional city engineer. That city engineer will need a GIS analyst. It'll be a second GIS analyst to assist in that department. The third position is a transfer. We're transferring a special project analyst from Central Services to assist public works. So that's an increase of three, but actually two new bodies and a transfer. The police department will see a reduction of two. There's a finance coordinator right now in the police department that'll be transferred to Central Services. There will be the removal of an office supervisor that was deemed not to be necessary in supervisor capacity. These employees being removed will be eligible for an early retirement center through IRF, through an early retirement incentive program that the mayor will be presenting to the city council for consideration and approval. Did a survey, 50 employees are eligible, 26 employees have access and interest. What you usually find happening is that the senior employees may very well take that they have the years of service. They can buy five years of service credit towards their pension and five years of age. And they can go out earlier than anticipated on pension. 80% of those positions can -- we can fill up to 80% of those positions. When you lose some senior employees, most of the bodies are in public works. We'll fill those, many of those positions. They can't all be vacant because we still have to provide the services. But there'll be a savings there, and the employees that are being moved from the budget will have an incentive to assist them with their retirement. Also in police, you have three deputy chiefs. They're going to reduce that number to two and use that vacant -- the position's vacant, has been vacant. They're going to use that position to fill up with a police officer that can be out on the street. And in building and planning, it's an increase of two. They're going to hire a code enforcement supervisor in the building department, and they'll receive a transfer of a special project analyst from Central Services. The fire department will see a reduction of one person. They'll be fully staffed in terms of uniformed firefighters, the emergency personnel. A special project analyst is being removed from the fire budget. Central services, three new positions, a chief of staff, a lakefront coordinator. We have the largest stretch of undeveloped lakefront between Chicago and Milwaukee. It's been undeveloped for as long as I can remember. We want to hire a lakefront coordinator whose primary responsibility will be focusing on the lakefront, working with the administration and ways in which to get developers interested in the diamond in the rough. And a staff accountant who's currently working as an intern, like to put on a full-time There will be a transfer of a special assistant from Central Services to building. So the net effect there -- oh, and beach interns. You need -- the beach is open, so you need people to work it. There'll be part-time employees, and as a full-time equivalent, it makes up about half a body. The net effect of all these changes is 4.5, full-time equivalents. We know our businesses were affected by COVID, but to what extent? It's always hard to quantify that. We hear about people out of work. We hear about businesses closing. What statistics do we have? Well, the Illinois Department of Revenue maintains records of license holders, taxpayers. In 2019, we had 1,359 sales tax generating businesses identified by Illinois Department of Revenue. In 2020, that number fell to 1,274, which means a loss of 85 businesses. 6.3% of tax-paying businesses in Waukegan closed in 2020. Hotel motel tax. You know what happened with travel? Restrictions on travel, restrictions at Great Lakes on graduations, which brought in a lot of people into hotel motels. Revenue fell by $700,000 in 2020, 54% in hotel motel tax. Video gaming tax. When the government put on the restrictions in terms of closing certain businesses or restricting hours and access, we lost $333,000, almost 30%. That's not to say that total taxes in general went down, because in fact, sales tax in Waukegan last year reached an all-time record of $10.3 million. Losses in these areas, although as crucial as they are, was made up in certain areas. Lumber saw a huge increase in sales. Food purchases in our local grocers, big increase. People are staying home, shopping online, getting their food delivered, getting packages delivered. We have a permanent spot, I think, in front of my house for the prime truck that comes by, and many of you probably see it in your block and your home on a daily basis. But these are significant losses. We are not projecting these losses in the current year. We're much more optimistic. We see a robust improvement in the economy, and we're going to see these numbers drastically improve. Where the money comes from? Where the money comes from? Out of $181 million, we're a public body. We don't sell products. We don't make widgets. We provide services. And oftentimes, you can't identify a specific public for the service. So there's taxes. So everyone pays into the pool. Taxes account for the lion's share of total revenue, 111 million of the 181. Licenses, fees, permits, all those user charges, 10 million. Water and sewer sales, 14 million. Intergovernmental, those are grants, the support that we received in the federal government and the state government. Police and Fire, they've done a lion's, a yeoman's job in applying for and receiving grants for public safety initiatives. Other grants? The American Rescue Plan will recognize $9.8 million this year, $9.8 million next year. Community development block grant, 1.6 million. Interest income, 2.26 million. You can imagine, that's not in the general funds. That's in our pension funds. That's where a large pool of money is available for investment purposes. And we're projecting that those, that investments by professional investment managers will bring in a good sum. Fines and penalties, 3 million. Premiums, premiums are amounts paid by employees into the fund. It's not money paid by the public. Employees are paying premiums into the insurance fund. Pension contributions? Police and Fire, set by statute, will make a contribution to the pension funds. But those are the sources of revenue, where the money comes from. Okay? By source, you can see, Home and Rural Sales Tax, we're predicting will generate 9.3 million, 8% of total taxes. Property taxes, sales tax. I didn't want to get overly optimistic. Last year was a record year at 10.3. Personally, I can see it increasing by at least 1.5%. But we kept it at last year's level. We try to be conservative with these numbers. If people want to talk about the revenues, they can talk about what assumptions we use in projecting these revenues. And then we can have a meaningful discussion. Local use tax. Yeah, some of these fees and taxes are pretty set. We know what they're going to be. They don't change all that dramatically year to year. Others will show changes based on the economic conditions. But this is the printout of the 111 million. Where does the money go? Public safety. 85 million of the 181 million dollars will go for public safety. And if you talk to most of your residents, that's where they want the money to go. They want police protection. They want fire and emergency services. They want their streets maintained. You'll see Public Works for streets, bridges, Public Works projects, another 14 million. Capital Projects. Those are total capital projects in streets, sidewalks, alleys, water and sewer. Improvements within the TIF districts will take 13 million of the budget. Principal Retirement, $11 million on our outstanding debt. And as long as we can keep a lid on the issues of bonds, you'll see that number gradually increase, at least by the tune of 10% to 12% a year. The American Rescue Plan, you can see at the end, there are 9.8 million. That's where the money goes. Okay? General Fund, the Chief Operating Fund. Taxes account for 80% of General Fund financing, followed by licenses and permits. But you can see a lion's share of public government is taxes. By department? 38 million in the Police Department, 25 million in the Fire Department, 7 million in Public Works. You see, those are the three primary areas that the city focuses on. Well, those are also departments with a large number of employees. You have at least 95, I believe, employees in the Fire Department. You have 195 total in Police. Salaries and benefits drive up that cost. Personal services, that's salaries, overtime, any kind of total allowance or clothing allowance received by employees costs 40 million. Benefits include hospitalization, workers' comp, liability, life insurance, 30 million. You can see how much is left for non-personnel related. As a service provider, our cost is driven by personnel costs. 8 million is available for contractual services, 1.6 for commodities. Capital outlay, there's $11,000 in the General Fund budget for capital outlay. There's no capital in the General Fund budget. Resources aren't available for it. Is it not cooperating? Special Revenue Funds. There are 17 special revenue funds. There's a lot of them. They all have a very specific purpose. They focus on one particular thing. They're restricted. They cover activities financed by very specific taxes, grants, forfeitures that are collected and used for an assigned purpose. It's a 39.5 million dollar budget. Property taxes for revenues collection, motor fuel taxes for steering repairs, incremental property taxes from the TIF districts. Expenditures total 25.2. We will transfer special revenue funds in support of eligible projects. Home and Rural Sales Tax, there's a Home and Rural Sales Tax Infrastructure Fund that was created. That money can be used for $2 million for streets. A million dollars to pay off the 2018 A G O bond. $280,000 for 2015 sales tax bond. $692,000 to 2016 G O bond. Those bond payments do not come off the property taxes. They'll come from Home and Rural Sales Tax. And those, on an annual basis, that amount will be abated from the property tax, so it never shows up on the tax bill. McGaw Park. That TIF will transfer 2.8 million, 29 million to pay off a 2021 G O TIF bond that was issued to the developer to develop McGaw Park. And that note will be paid off solely by incremental taxes from the TIF district, never by the taxpayers, never by the city. Okay? You can see all the special revenue funds. There's 17 of them. Yes, we have deficits, probably much in much all of them. But with liquidity, they're all covered. They're all covered with unassigned cash and investments that are available. Capital Project Funds. 4,150, streets, sidewalks, alleys, 500,000 for public works equipment. Debt Service. Revenues are 9.5. Debt Service principal interest will cost 14.4. Got the new bond issue in the 2021 A B tax increment. That was for McGaw Park, $44 million bond. Paid off to reimburse the developer for improvements made for development that will take place. Paid off solely by the developer, by the development itself. Okay? These are the general obligation bonds. And how much is being paid off in the 2021 budget year? 11 general obligation bonds, as you can see. Three of them are paid off solely from sales tax, Home and Rural Sales Tax. Will cover the expenses on three of those bonds. The TIF will pay off the 2021 A bonds. Real estate taxes will be extended on six of the G O issues, as they are on an annual basis. And there's a special assessment bond, paid off simply by the special assessment. Principal being retired is 10,534. There'll be $3.8 million in interest costs, $14.3 million in total debt service. Enterprise Funds, again, water and sewer and a parking fund. Between the two, they'll generate $16.1 million. Plant expenditures, 22 million. In water and sewer, $11.4 million operating costs of the facility. It will transfer $2 million to Water and Sewer Capital Project Fund. We'll spend $9.3 million in capital projects, filtration plant improvements, water main, storm sewers, sanitary sewers. And we'll pay principal and interest on outstanding water and sewer bonds. Okay? The Parking Fund will generate $1.3 million. Will pay out $1.3 million. It'll retire principal on outstanding parking bonds and principal on an outstanding lease. Internal Service centralized fund, provides services to other departments. Employee Insurance Fund, 9,146. Safety and Risk Management, 3.9. Information Technology, 5.4. Risk Management and Information Technology Services won't show any expenditures. On paper, it shows expenditures, but then the fund receives that cash infusion from the other funds, other departments of the city, which it recovers it by providing services to the other departments. So the real money that comes out of that fund isn't the employee insurance benefit. Okay? Fiduciary. Police and Fire Pension Funds, the three sources of revenue. Police will pay 9.91% by statute on their salary. Fire, 9.45%. Investment earnings in the Police Pension and the Fire Pension. And employer contribution that is set by an actuary who is hired on an annual basis. He performs an actuarial analysis and evaluation of our pension funds and tells us how much we need to contribute to the fund to have those funds 90% funded by 2040, by the year 2040. We will levy that tax as recommended by the actuary. And we will supplement that with $500,000 each in gaming tax revenue. Okay? To give you an idea of the fiduciary funds, you see the cost up on top, 9 million for Police, 7 million for Fire. They are both less than 50% funded. There's a huge unfunded liability in both Police and Fire Pension Funds. And you'll find that pretty typical across the state. By statute, we have to be 90% funded by 2040. You can see how high the actuary has determined the liability to be. The unfunded actuarial balance in Police is 91 million, 91.8. In Fire is 67 million. On paper, those are huge numbers. But it's covered on an annual basis. We will contribute what the actuary tells us to contribute. And we will be 90% funded by the year 2040. You can expect pension costs to go up every year. They do not go down. Percentage of payroll. This is how much the city pays into those funds on an annual basis as a percentage of total payroll. Almost 60% of payroll is a cost to the city that goes into those pension funds. There's 148 retired police officers now receiving benefits. There's 32 that are eligible but not yet receiving. Active plan members, there's only 143. We have more receiving benefits than we have paying into the fund. So you know what that does. It's going to drive up the contribution requirement of the city. And with Fire, it's the same. It's not quite the same numbers. It's inactive members receiving benefits, 25. For not yet receiving, 114 paying into the fund. Finally, the last two slides, TIF. It's interesting, it was having in our TIF. We're up to TIF number 10. There's only six active TIFs. Two of them will have activity in 2021. The downtown TIF, number eight, be making parking garage repairs for $675,000. And Seashore's Drive resurfacing. The budget from TIF number eight will be $600,000. The budget from TIF number seven will be another $4 million. That'll cover the Seashore's Drive resurfacing. There's money within TIF seven to cover that. More than enough to transfer money into TIF number eight for the resurfacing. Let's see what these TIFs are doing. You see, three of them were established in January 2014. And you see how much the value of the property has increased since the date those districts were created. North Lakefront TIF, number seven. That tax base within that TIF has gone up 22.6%. You should see these TIFs increase dramatically over the years as development takes place within those districts. And that development gets on the tax rolls is going to increase the amount of taxes paid into that district. Those are incremental taxes that come to the city for further improvements. TIF number eight has increased in value since its founding by 26%. The South Lakefront, by 22%. McGaw Park already by 278%. It's gone from 13 million to 48 million. And that was the purpose for that TIF note, helping the developer, reimburse the developer for TIF-related expenses. It'll be paid off by increment generated within that district. In terms of what's taken place, you can see the private-public investment so far. That's the 181.8 million budget as briefly as possible. And we can entertain any questions anyone might have. I can't promise to know the answer, but I'll certainly try or turn it over to Sheri or to the mayor. Any questions? Yes, please.
Can you pull the slide back up, Sheri? Like the second or third slide was the fund summary?
Okay.
You said about special revenues that they can only be spent on certain things. And then, so you have revenues of 39 and expenditures of only 35. So then there's an excess of 4 million, right?
Yes.
And then, but then it says other sources for uses in parentheses of funds. And so then you have a number in there that says you're going to use that number somewhere else. And you initially said with a special fund, you couldn't do that, so I'm a little confused.
They're being transferred to eligible uses within that. Yeah, it's restricted to a certain use, but not necessarily within that fund itself. I'd have to look at the specific ones to tell you where it's going to go.
And then, under that... And then under debt service?
Yeah, like the American Rescue Plan is a special revenue fund.
And then under debt service, how can you have revenue under debt service? I guess I'm a little confused where, how does debt make one?
Because money will be transferred into debt service from home rule sales tax for one.
So that's funding the?
The nine point five is what's being generated most likely through the property taxes, which transfers into that fund from? I guess TIF will transfer some money into it, sales tax will transfer, either home rule sales tax will transfer a good sum into it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Yes, Alderman. Oh, thank you very much.
Question. Straight to the point. When you raise property taxes, do you need to make sure?
I'm sorry.
Are we going to raise property taxes and does this necessitate the property taxes?
Will we raise property taxes?
Yeah, we have to raise property taxes to leave this level. Thank you. So if I can.
The question was, do we need to raise property taxes to balance this budget? No, and in the raising of taxes, it's up to the mayor and city council. That's your decision to make, but it's not projected in this budget. This budget is based on a levy that was passed already last year and we're collecting now.
So sometimes I move a fence. I'm just going to encapsulate some rest, just as I understand. Back in May, new mayor came in and then showed here that we lost our finance, we had to need to finance. There had been no prior planning or preparation for a new budget. Is that right? Nobody planned to hit it or transition. And then, then we had, coming into this process, we had a twelve million dollar deficit.
Yeah. That's the first one I saw.
Yes. And then, that twelve million dollar deficit was reduced to about four hundred thousand dollars deficit.
It was reduced, the first, as I understand it, was reduced the first go-around to eight million. And we had a second go-around. And we were tasked then with working with the departments once again to try to cut costs where possible and also take another look at revenue projections. The revenue, I don't think the revenue projections were fully completed because we adjusted the revenues as well.
So, but my thing ultimately came down to one thousand dollar deficit. I thought I heard one.
Yeah. The deficit came down to three point two million. Yeah. And we're covering that with lost revenue from the American Rescue Plan. We'll cover that completely.
So in eight weeks, or sixty-six calendar days, you reduce the budget to twelve million dollars to three point two million dollars. No budget for that to be made. And no prior. That's exceptional, that's phenomenal.
Thank you.
I want you guys to manage my budget too.
Can I clarify that one?
Yes, ma'am.
So the twelve million was what the requests were from some of the departments, and that for the twelve million was, can you reduce that to?
So the twelve million was the requests from some of the departments. We went through and looked at those requests, what were just not going to happen this year, and reduced that to eight point five. From there, we got it down to three point four. And from there, with the rescue money, we got it down, we were able to use over three million for that, I think it was three million forty-eight, got it down to four hundred thousand. And I guess effective last night, Mr. Schultz found that we could use a little bit more money, and we're not a hundred percent what that'll be right now, but we should get it down even further than that. So I believe that we have done a remarkable job. It has been a tough go, and I'm not going to lie about that. It has been tough. It is not a budget that offers everybody what they want, because obviously that wish list had a whole lot more on it. But it is something that we can live with as a city, and we will thrive and it'll be just fine.
Thank you very much, ma'am. So, all things being what they are, is this budget, this new budget, is it going to necessitate any significant reduction in city services provided to our rescue plan?
Not at work, ma'am.
Outstanding, thank you, congratulations. Thank you, ma'am.
Alderman, we didn't fully answer your question about the transfer. How you can transfer money out of a special revenue fund, that's restricted. The bulk of that is from the home rule sales tax infrastructure fund. That fund was established by ordinance to collect home rule sales taxes to be used for streets, sidewalks, alleys. So rather than show the expenditure out of that fund, that money is transferred over to the street and sidewalk fund where it's paid out. And that accounts for four million of that. Then another million can be used for streets and sidewalks to motor fuel tax. Rather than spending money directly out of motor fuel tax, it's being spent out of public works, eligible use. So that's another million of the transfer. And if I keep looking, I'm going to find the rest as well. It's a massive budget. It's a very ambitious budget as well. If we fall short on reviews, I'll be in big trouble. If we go over budget on expenditures, we haven't done our job. Yes, ma'am.
So I understand you stated there's no reduction in services, but knowing that we lost our community officers, will there be an increase in our police officers? Can you clarify, not being redundant, can you clarify or revisit that issue?
George, you want to handle it?
Right now, there are some additional police officers in the budget that was already put in by Chief Walls. Those are still in the budget, but obviously cannot be spent until a budget is approved. So those are, were, you can be in the recruitment process, you just can't hire anybody until a budget is passed. Like I said, this, I believe that we've done a phenomenal job. It is amazing to me that we've been able to pull this together and work, but let me tell you, this is an amazing staff, and I want everybody here to understand the people that you have working at City Hall and how they have come together to make this happen, how the aldermen have listened to this budget for, what, a good ten days now? You're probably tired of talking numbers like I am. But, you know, it's been really truly a process that we should be proud of as a city, that it actually, we've done so much better than other municipalities in achieving what we have. And like I said, I think this gentleman deserves a wonderful round of applause, along with Chief Bridges, like I said, our H R director, our planning and zoning director, and our financier. So please give them a warm thank you. If there's no further questions, are there any? Okay, there's some audience time questions, so. We have two people who signed up. You'll have three minutes. The first one is Ms. Ram Hernandez. Oh! You can talk anyway. Okay. That's all right, whether Ms. Maug or Carrasco. Three minutes. Come right on up. We want to make sure we can hear you.
Just first of all, thank you very much for your presentation. I apologize, it came a little late, but I did have a copy of it and just reviewed it. I was also present when they had the other hearing, okay? And just in a nutshell, you made, your final statement was right on target, that, you know, all the efforts and allocations here for the budget is really great, but the problem is at the end of the year, we go over budget and expenditures, okay? And looking back, it's atrocious, okay? The police department. I did a FOIA, there's so many police officers, and I'm glad the chief is present here, okay, great. And he knows, I've addressed this with him several times. You have individuals that, several officers, are making over a hundred thousand dollars extra just in overtime, okay? And we can't afford it, okay? So I would like to know what measures are going to be in place to prevent that pattern from milking the taxpayers out of so much more money? I mean, this is a blue collar community, and you have police officers, you know, that, you know, I think there's measures that can be done in order to prevent that. And also, the next biggest problem was that here we have the budget, and in the past, the finance on person in charge would just flip money from other accounts left and right, okay? And there's no accountability, and that should be stopped, okay? And what it was, they were taking money from other projects and other departments to put into the police department to compensate for all that a hundred thousand dollars in overtime. So that's my biggest concern of control measures and illegal transferring of funds back and forth, that needs to stop. Otherwise, all of our efforts, now everyone's efforts here to do a budget, it's right out the window, because they're not respecting it and they're not abiding by it, and we can't afford that anymore. Thank you very much.
I will make a couple of last closing remarks, and that is, this year, this is just the start with our budget. Not only will we be watching the budget along the way and making our department heads accountable, but we will also now be looking at our individual departments. In our city, most of our departments have run like silos. They do not necessarily communicate verbally, nor do their software packages communicate. So starting next week, we will start to be addressing that as we go forward to make our city more efficient. Remember, why we're looking like we're breaking even right now, had it not been for the Band-Aid of the American Rescue Act, we would still have a three point four million dollar deficit. So we need to address these issues. There's overall a bigger problem. The Band-Aid has solved it for us and made it better, but we have a lot of work ahead of us, and believe me, as soon as this budget is passed, we roll up the sleeves and we're on to the next project. Thank you, have a good evening, everyone. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. We forgot, this is a formal meeting. We need a motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Kirkwood. A motion to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.